Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Special Town Council meeting of Monday, June 1st, 2020, 6:30 PM. This meeting is being held via remote access. Just have to read this message first pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The special meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. I know this is being recorded by YouTube, so, sorry.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
I double-checked. Okay. I reminded that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.ci.southbridge.us as soon as we are able. Any votes made this evening will be by roll call vote. This meeting will be called to order. Hey, please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if Counselor Adams, please lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Adams?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Can't hear him.
Yeah, we can't hear him.
Oh, well, he's here. So I'll mark him down.
He's here. He's here, so I'll mark him as here.
Perfect. Counselor Catrona?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Absent.
Counselor Mano? Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
And Counselor Steve?
Present.
Okay. We do have a quorum. Citizens' forum. We do have a citizens' forum listed on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody from that's out there that wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? I think mostly everybody that I see on here is either participating in the meeting or a counselor, but I'll ask one more time. Anyone wishing to address the town council on anything not on the agenda? Okay. Next, item five. Tonight, we have a presentation by Southbridge Innovation Center and infrastructure project by Chip Norton. Mr. Town Manager, do you want to introduce us first and then we'll go from there?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So recently, Chip Norton reached out to me to talk to me about setting up a conversation first with a couple of councils and then eventually with the full council. And he's looking at opening up, as we've discussed in the past, opening up his property to other residents of Town of Southbridge for a variety of things, including hiking and walking and kayaking and a whole different group of things that would be good for the citizens of Southbridge. With that, he plans on doing millions of dollars of upgrades to his property to enhance the whole location. And with that, he needs state cooperation to be able to apply for certain state and federal funds. I asked first the chairman and the vice chairman to meet with him just to kind of understand what the basic premise of all this was going to be. And we had a very nice conversation. Everybody got to ask some questions, but it was sort of a brief introduction. And the chairman wanted to have the full council involved and have a lot more detail. So as you see, Chip has presented a lot more information that we still need to review thoroughly. But Chip is here tonight really to present to all of us his ideas and the kind of support he's looking from the town to help make this not only benefit him, but it's really a benefit to the whole community. I think as we heard his conversation, we would not be bringing this forward to the town council unless we thought that this was really good for the entire town. But I'll let Chip do that presentation. Appreciate the chairman and vice chairman bringing this to the council for their consideration. There is a contract in here that if the council likes this and wants to move forward, we'll have legal review of that. But frankly, I'm not even done doing an analysis on the contract yet as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Obviously, Chip Norton is here, and I suspected either him or one of his associates will be bringing for the presentation.
Thank you. So before I go to Mr. Norton and his team, yeah, so we did have a meeting that the town manager asked me to sit in on. And there was a general discussion about the project that was going on. And I think Chip has been here before, counsel with his master plan when we talked about some of the work down there. And he had some additional projects. And my thought at the time was while he did bring it to the chair and the vice chair to discuss, it really needed to come forward to the full council to say, hey, let us take a look at what his plans were before we went down the road to invest in any legal expense or having the town manager invest in any legal expense to move forward with whatever it was that needed to be done on the town's behalf. So that's why it's here tonight. We asked to put together as much information as you could so we could thoroughly review it as a council level and then at some point give some consensus to the town manager whether this is something that we would support so that he could have the review of the easements or whatever needed to be done and approved by the council going forward. So that's why it's here tonight. And thank you for that. And I thought it was enough that we should have at least a special meeting so that we could thoroughly vet all the information and not just have it as a brush by at a council meeting so that we'd have enough time to ask a lot of questions and be able to really understand what the scope of the project was and what the impact or what potential impact it could have to the Town of Southbridge. So that was our thought process as chair and vice chair and discuss that to move this forward. So with that, I will ask Chip to go ahead. I did give his team presenter rights, so the stage is yours. And good evening, Chip. So welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Hey, I'm sorry before you start, Jack, if you could switch back to presenter mode for me.
Okay, yeah, probably because I switched over from mine. Sorry about that. Hold on one second.
This is why they didn't let me touch any buttons, Jack.
Yeah. All right, Eric, there you go. You should be good now.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Jack, and counselors for allowing us to present to you tonight our proposed infrastructure project for the Southbridge Innovation Center and master plan along with the concept of a public access, public easement for these improvements. I have with me tonight the team that's worked with me on putting this together, starting off with Bill Geis, Spagnola Geis, architects. They've been our architect in the park for 10 to 15 years and have been a major driver behind this master plan. Carl Freshour of IBI Group, nationally renowned land planner, who's also working with SGA and putting the master plan together. Julie Holstrom of Worcester Business Development Corp., they've been my development consultant in Southbridge for the last couple of years and have worked with me in Central Mass for 10 to 20 years. And she and her team are working on government, state relations, and finance structure for this deal. And then my attorney, Mark Donahue, Fletcher Tilton in Worcester. Mark's represented me for 25 to 30 years on all my projects and is very familiar with public-private partnerships and contracts agreements like we're going to present tonight. So once again, my name is Chip Norton. I'm the managing director of Southbridge Associates LLC and affiliates. I acquired the property, you know, the former AO campus in 2005 from American Optical and have gone through a redevelopment since then. The complex is 1.2 million square feet, consisting of 14 buildings. A major building for the project is the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center, which was built in 2001 with the Department of Defense. And then in addition to that, we have another 500,000 square feet, including the center, that's been leased primarily to manufacturing, including Shot North America, Metalogics, and Clean Parts. We have about 650,000 square feet left to go. And that redevelopment, we intend to include residential, office, laboratory, manufacturing, and mixed use. We currently employ in the park about 350 folks, and we expect that to double as part of this redevelopment process. One of our residential projects we're moving forward on, Southbridge Mills, the first phase is 515 K Street, 70,000 square foot building to be converted to 48 units. We have all of our approvals in place with the state. If you could just go back to that slide, last slide, please. We have all of our approvals in place with the town for zoning for residential, as well as the Affordable Housing Program in Massachusetts. We submitted our final documentation in February, and we are just waiting to hear next steps. Our hope is we'll get awarded the necessary credits to move forward this summer. If not, this would be a 2021 project. The second phase of Southbridge Mills is 25 K Street, which is adjacent to 515. This is a two-story mill building, about 200,000 square feet. And we've designed this for 100 units and about 25 indoor parking spaces. We have just started the pre-application process once again to go through the state Affordable Housing Program, which will be submitted in November. And our hopes is this would be a 2022 project. It would follow along after 515 K Street. AD Optical Drive is going through a redevelopment. This is a 35,000 square foot building. First floor is fully leased and redeveloped, and we entered into a lease with Department of Transitional Assistance in the early spring. Second floor of this building, done the construction now, will be occupied in September, and this building will be completed. We're also working on the marketing of 40 Optical Drive. This is American Optical's original research and development building. And we're looking for marketing the building for a similar sort of use. 35 Optical Drive, as some of you may know, used to be the home for Arrow Company, which got acquired by 3M. And we are marketing this for manufacturing, 200,000 square foot building with about 140,000 square feet on the main floor. And lastly, 50 Optical Drive. This is one of the first concrete buildings built in the United States, 160,000 square feet, four-story. And we've been in discussions with state law enforcement over the last six months to a year to build this out as a training, housing, and mixed-use facility as a flagship training center in Central Mass for law enforcement. The master plan project, the main objective here obviously is to complete the development of the rest of the park and generate the additional 300 to 400 jobs, but also to provide really amenity for the town as a public open space for use. We estimate the improvements to be about $15 million, which I'll go through the breakdown a little bit later. The core of these improvements are roadway and bridge upgrades, but also amenities for the town, creation of walking biking trails, and public access to the Quinnebach River, which would include both boat access, canoe access, but also people access pedestrian walkways. And as such, new lighting throughout the park and enhanced signage program. When they've started this program, the developer would be responsible for doing all of the upgrades specific to the buildings, site work, landscaping, signage, and lighting in and around each building. So this is an aerial of the park, and it may be a little too small to see, but the center body of water has been known historically as Lendsdale Pond, which I guess was monickered by American Optical back at some point. Tonight, we want to unveil the renaming of this as the Southbridge Pond as part of the moving forward with a public access project for the town. This would tie together nicely with the common area in the police station, which we donated that land to the town in the mid-'90s. We're not necessarily donating the pond to that dispoint, but we are naming it after Southbridge. And we will be adding, installing in June, three lit fountains that will be running 24/7 and act as pretty much an iconic image for the town and hopefully a very positive image going forward. With that, I'm going to have Carl Freshour with Bill Geis walk you folks through the components of the master plan.
Thanks, Chip. That's pretty... Very exciting with the new name of the Southbridge Pond. And I started working on this project with Chip and Bill over two years ago. And upon entering the site, I was just enamored with all the great trees, the rolling character of the landscape, and just working my way through the site and coming upon this pond. It was just, it was a gem. And to highlight this is the catalyst or the landmark for this development. It's pretty cool. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through some of our overall aspirations and goals for the master plan and how they tie into this streetscape improvement and how all these open spaces tie together with their vision. So next slide, please. The first, and I apologize for the scale of this, it might be hard to read, but the magenta or pink lines are showing the major vehicular connectivity along East Main Street, Mechanic. And then as you enter at the purple circles on both ends, it starts to show the internal vehicular network connection with the site. Next slide, please. And this is an overlay of the future pedestrian connectivity on the site where we have the same two bookend entry points, north and south, but then we're creating two more mid-block, if you will. And these act as these connector nodes to these internal open spaces, which are very important. And you'll see throughout this presentation. The circular lines that are dotted on the plan show walking radiuses. So, and I can't even zoom in there right now. I think it's a 10 and 15 minute walking radius. So it gives you an idea of the scale. Yeah, there is quarter and a half hour radius, so it's 5 and 10. And we'll show you this connectivity of this series of open spaces that will be brought upon from these streetscape improvements. Next slide, please. So this is the public road improvement plan. And what this shows is where the Phase 1 major touch areas will be as we enter off Mechanic Street at Optical Drive and exit off Case. And this is where most of the pedestrian and road improvements that Chip had just discussed will take place. Next slide. And these are a series of the open spaces that that connectivity will start to reach out to. And when we highlight them on this plan, it really shows you these variety of the spaces that Chip was starting to hint on, the kayak dock, the boardwalk, the mountain hiking trails, and also the bike connectivity, and a little pocket park adjacent to AD Optical. And I think that once you see all these opportunities for open space, you get excited, especially in the climate and the landscape that we have right now, where open space and access to public open space is such an important thing, to be able to get out into these spaces, to be separated, but also continue to work on wellness and health and open it up to the public. It's really exciting. So, next slide. And so what I'm going to start to do is I'm going to zoom in a little bit closer, and I'm going to walk you through a series of these improvements as we walk through the campus. The first improvement area is the main entry, and this is the intersection of Mechanic and Optical Drive. And the improvements that will take place here are universally accessible sidewalks to connect you into the site, landscape improvements in the foreground of those great existing trees, and then signage. Next slide, please. And now we're going to turn right onto Optical Drive and go into the site. And the highlighted area, the area that has a little more color, is the next section of the improvement plan. And in this area, we see that, again, universally accessible sidewalks are created, lighting, signage, and then this improvement of layer of planting to accent the mature growth trees. And then one of the more important items is a new pedestrian and vehicular bridge to get you across the river and into the rest of the core of the campus. And that's the aspirational image in the middle. It shows a dedicated walking lane and then a vehicular lane bridge. Next slide, please. We're going to turn right and kind of, we've rotated the plan. 25 Optical is the building on the right, and 35 is below, and the river is on the left. And again, we're continuing this pedestrian improvement in this pedestrian access along the river's edge with a concrete pedestrian walk, lighting, signage, and then infill plant material where needed. Next slide, please. And now we're going to turn down between 35, 40, and 50 Optical, where this is where we start to see we've migrated through the site, and now we have this vast swath of open space that goes along the pond or the river reservoir, goes on the bottom side of 40 Optical, and then an enhanced boardwalk that overlooks Southbridge Pond with the fountains aerating, access from a kayak dock on the left at the tip of 40 Optical, and on the far end, a little area to go fishing. And then also some of the remnants of the historical vernacular of the site with some of the cannons that used to be on-site. And then again, enhancing some of the plant material along the way. And then if we move up the plan around 60 Optical, past 70, again, continuing this pedestrian connectivity, universally accessible, signage, and lighting as we go towards 80 Optical. Next slide, please. And we start to head down. The pocket park that Chip mentioned on the side of 80 Optical is the square little postage stamp, which is a great little spot because it overlooks the dam and the weir. It's a postcard shot. And then again, we have another bridge that is being proposed that will have a safe pedestrian connection along with the vehicular connection as well. And then there's some potential improvements to the intersection at Route 131 that Bill's going to explain a little bit further. Bill?
This is now Bill Geis speaking. So as Carl mentioned, we're going to look at providing a new access onto East Main Street from Case Street. And as you can see, the Case Street as it exists extends over to the left in front of 5 and 15 Case, and then exits out onto East Main Street. That, in our opinions, is a very dangerous intersection, both entering in there and exiting. And so we're going to pull it further back and take a straight line out of Case Street onto East Main. Next slide, please. So the proposal that we are working with Chip on right now is to show something like this where you come out on that second bridge and then have a slowdown lane to come in and have an acceleration lane to get back onto East Main Street and make the grade change. If you go to the next slide, that is looking at 25 K Street right in the middle, and you'd have the two bridges left and right of that. And we're proposing to raise the grade up in front of 25 Case to get us up to the level of East Main. Back to you, Carl.
Okay. Next slide, please. Now we're back on East Main Street. And Chip has already made this gesture, a prelude, if you will, by taking down the fence, saying that we are going to welcome the public here. And so the improvements have already started, and the complexion and the landscape is starting to be welcome to the public. So as you walk along or move to the left up East Main Street, this is where we start to enter the public open space near the roundabout where there's an overlook to see the, that's over top of the water outfall that leads into the reservoir. And there's also a little garden walk that's adjacent to East Main Street that you can walk along through some trees and then get close to the water, move back into the woods over a little bridge, and then you start to walk up the reservoir river edge. And it leads, next slide, please. It leads to the second kayak landing or launch area that interfaces with the river. And then from there, moving north or up towards the plan is a dedicated pedestrian bridge. So it creates this internal circuit of open space where you don't have to get onto any roadways, and you are totally immersed in the landscape as you walk along the water's edge. Next slide, please. And then Bill, do you want to talk about the signage here?
Sure. On this slide, we're showing some proposed signage that'll be throughout the park, monument signs at the entry points, the building signs that will occur at each of the buildings. Then there'll be some lower-scale wayfinding signs for people on bicycles and people on foot. So it'll be, I think, a really nice wayfinding vocabulary that'll go throughout the park to welcome all the public to come through and where you can go for different activities and as you pass through the park. Next slide. This map shows where those signs are all planned to go. So at your leisure, you can look a little closer at this for the signage. Next slide. And then again, same way, this is the pedestrian signs that'll occur throughout the park. And as you can see up into the hillside where the walking and bike paths occur. Next slide. I'll take it from here. I just want to comment on some of the slides that Carl and Bill just went through. The internal spaces will be accessed by vehicles, and we'll also provide parking within the park for the public to get inside the park, park their cars, and then utilize the boardwalk and the riverfront and those sorts of things, the bike trails, whatever. So you'll be able to walk into the park, parking in other areas like Crystal Street, but you'll also be able, the public will be able to drive into the park, and there'll be designated public parking areas for folks to leave their car and then go ahead and utilize the amenities with inside the park. As I mentioned earlier, we've put a budget together for the project of about $15 million. And we envision this being broken out into three stages. First stage, $8 million. And Julie Holstrom will talk a second about the capitalization of Phase 1. But the focus here is to deal with the road infrastructure, the main entrance, but also to focus on and build out the public amenities, the boardwalk, water access, those things. So that the amenities, bike trails, the amenities get built in the first phase of the project. Phase 2 is the Optical Drive Bridge, which is the current main bridge on the property that Carl... on the property that Carl showed uh how that the the vision of that being rebuilt in more contemporary, wider bridge. And then phase three is basically the project Bill walked through, which is the new entrance into K Street. And this has been moved out to phase three. It'll tie together with the redevelopment of that end of the property, but also the redevelopment of twenty-five K Street, which as uh we mentioned earlier, looks like that could be a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three project. So that fits nicely with the phase three um uh of the bridge development on K Street. Next. So I'm gonna have Julie Holstrom um walk us through uh the financial structure um for the capital plan. Julie?
Good evening, everyone. So as Chip mentioned, um the WBDC has um done some work um with both state and federal um various funding sources over the course of time and we um are assisting Chip um to kind of help identify and then pursue some of these different funding sources. Um, the first uh source that you see on here is we are seeking to uh pursue um a some an earmark in the um pending transportation bond bill that is currently before the Massachusetts Legislature. Um, we um had petitioned Senator Fatman to request an amendment that would appropriate a four million dollar um earmark in funds to assist with this infrastructure work. Um, we also then submitted some testimony to the Senate Committee on Bonding uh capital expenditures and state assets to support the legislation while also requesting that amendment. Um, and we are expecting to be following up with Senator Fatman's office um as the bills reported to the Senate floor um for debate. And once i- if and when it does go through on the Senate side, we'll follow up with um Representative Durant um on the House side to make sure it goes through with uh their conference report. Um, the second option that we're looking at is um the Mass Works program, which some of you may be familiar with. It's a um infrastructure program that is offered through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. Um, so we, in the event that something does not happen with the the bond bill, uh we'd like to look at pursuing a Mass Works application for uh the four million dollars. The guidance on this year's funding round has not yet been released. Um, but we are um expecting that those applications will be due by the end of August this year. And then finally, um the um last uh funding source that we're considering is a federal funding source, um which is through the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. Um, it's a public works grant. Um, they, this is a program that the WBDC has used um on various infrastructure projects throughout central Mass. Um, this program, po- program, excuse me, um just recently received an additional one point four six billion um from the CARES Act to assist communities in dealing with the impact of COVID. Um, so this application is a rolling application and could be used as a match because oftentimes the Mass Works program requires a match. Um, so the EDA funds could be used as a match to any state funding sources um to complete uh the phase one work.
Thanks, Julie. So in order to um memorialize the arrangement that we would have with the town to basically jointly make the improvements and then um uh open up the property for public access and use would be called a declaration of restricted covenants and conditions, which we prepared a draft and have included in the package. Uh Mark Danyu has represented us on similar sorts of agreements. Uh, we have two of such agreements with the City of Worcester. Um, we have a plaza, for those who have not been there to Mercantile Center, we have a plaza uh that runs through our property that we own, um but it has a public easement access agreement uh with the City of Worcester, which means we have to leave it open for the public and public funds were used to improve it. We also own a sixteen hundred car plus parking garage, which is used by both our tenants as well as the public. And there too, we have an agreement with the City of Worcester and we access Mass Works money for improvements to that garage through a um a public use, public easement agreement that runs uh in perpetuity with that garage, which basically says we have to leave that garage open at all times uh for public use along with our private use. So with that, I I thought Mark could, I'd walk you generally through the um concept behind the declaration agreement as well as some of the key terms and conditions. Mark?
Thanks, Chip. Um, good evening, members of the council. Um, the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants and Conditions, as Chip indicated, is really meant to memorialize the commitment that you're hearing from Southbridge Associates and the team uh that a significant part of the effort of this uh master plan is to create a continuous public use of certain portions of of the park. Uh, and the restriction does that in a fashion that does not recreate any affirmative obligation on the town for regular maintenance or any liability as a result of it. Rather, what the restriction does or the restrictive covenants do is simply memorialize and create a binding obligation uh upon the owners of the real estate themselves to keep those areas open to the public. Uh, some of those areas would be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, such as the roadways and the bridges that Chip talked of. Other parts will be have some limitations on them, uh such as the boardwalk, uh the park overlook, the pocket park, where it'll be more of a dawn to dusk use in in some fashion. And those rules and regulations will be developed uh originally by the owner and then obviously shared with the town uh in that fashion. All the costs of maintenance, repair uh and capital improvements when required uh stay with the owner of the property. The town does not take on any of that responsibility. The town is a regular practice now, um uh has police uh patrols that go through the park. Those would continue uh to enforce public order within the park in the in the regular fashion. The agreement is not just binding upon Southbridge Associates and Chip's organizations. It's a binding document that's recorded with the at the Registry of Needs and it runs with the land, meaning that any subsequent purchaser of the property in any fashion is bound by those restrictions and would be taking title subject to them. It won't be the only agreement that would uh memorialize and document the use of the funding sources that Julie went through if, as and when those became available. There'd be a much more detailed development agreement or funding agreement that would outline how the funds would get spent, the obligation that Chip's organization would have for public bidding, uh for example, and for other requirements for reporting and be able to access those funds, which we'll get more into the details of actually the implementation of the funds. But all of it will override the restrictive covenants. And so the restrictive covenant is presented to you in a draft form, really just as a as an example of one that we have used before and is commonly used in um in these type of structures. Uh, it would not be uh executed in any fashion nor recorded uh unless and until the funds are available to create this kind of public commitment. Uh, and if they were, then it would be recorded in conjunction with that development agreement uh at the same time. I'd be glad to answer any specific questions or otherwise try to assist the council in its consideration.
All right, you might want to go to the next slide, which had some of the detail. Mark just went through. I think he pretty covered most of this, Mark.
Yeah, I think so.
You want to go back, Eric, to the last slide, please?
I got some questions when you're ready.
Yeah, I mean, I got
Sure.
Pretty much the summary of our presentation and um we're happy to have you take some questions.
Chip.
All right, thanks, Chip. Uh, hold on one second, Ron, please. Eric, if you could take the presentation down just so I can be able to see who's on my screen. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so we'll take questions now. Thank you, Ron, for being patient. Uh, just I couldn't see anybody because all I could see was minimal people. So go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So so Mark, I just did my first kind of review of this. I haven't done a thorough review, but I noticed that first of all, that as this draft is given a read, the town is not a party to this. You you talk about, you know, it being public, open to the public and all that, but in the end, I know you're calling this a draft. Is is this agreement have the town as a party to it at some point or no?
But the town is a party um to the agreement to the sense that the town has the enforce has along with all of the other property owners, recognizing that legally, the Southbridge Innovation Center is actually owned by three separate entities. So uh those all entities have rights against each other to enforce the agreement. And the agreement provides that the town has specific rights to enforce uh the agreement under uh Article Four, the Default and Remedy Section.
We don't, we don't actually, there's no signature page for us to sign on it. So uh that usually when I have an agreement that involves the town or, you know, requires the town to do something, like I know you say we provide police patrols, which we already do, but this doesn't have a signature page for us, which implies that we're not a party. That's what I'm trying to understand. Should we have a signature page here? Should we be a part of this or are we not? How does that work?
Uh, let me answer that two ways. Uh, first, uh we're certainly not in in any form of objection to having the town become a signatory uh to the agreement. Some communities have have expressed a concern of the town becoming a party to this agreement on a concern that it may be some level of implied liability if a member of the public were to be injured or or something else adverse were to happen in any of the public areas, since the town doesn't have any responsibility of maintenance uh over those areas. Um, and that's why it was set up in that fashion, but certainly if the town is more comfortable being directly a party, then we're glad to add them as a direct party.
Yeah, and 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 truthfully, Mark, I'm not saying that. I'm trying to understand what this agreement means, right?
Sure.
So my impression of it is that you're gonna be planning for federal and state funds through whatever it might be. There doesn't have to be any formal agreement in writing between you and the town for that to happen. Really, the restrictions on the land to be able to make the land public is what allows the state and federal government to give you grant funds, just the fact that you opened it up to the public and the town knows and and generally likes that concept. I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Really, what you're asking the town to do formally as a result of what you're doing. I'm I'm struggling with that, looking at this agreement.
Well, I I think this agreement is only part and parcel of the ask, uh, Mr. Manager. Um, I I think it can be part and Julie can talk in more detail. But by way of example, the Mass Works grant application is actually made by the town. Um, and so if there's going to be a Mass Works application made, uh then the town would be the the applicant for it. And if the um Mass Works grant were awarded, then the town would probably want a supporting document um by which um Chip's organizations would indicate how they were going to assist the town in the dispersment and utilization of the money. And this declaration of restrictive covenants would become part and parcel of that so that it gets to be a matter of record before any of the money's actually spent.
And and we did that a little bit with United Lens when we did a
Right.
Infrastructure project for them and used a Mass Work program. So, okay, and I'm I'm just saying, I mean, obviously Mass Works like that. So you're not really looking for any town of really to sign any contract or anything like that. You're just looking for us as you request funds and maybe a mass work project. That's the kind of support you're you're looking for us to be involved with like real documentation and real estate requests. And I assume the state has seen these kind of agreements and is supportive of this concept.
Well, I'll I'll let I'll let Chip and Julie jump in. I think what what the ask is for either this evening or moving forward is that the town, except the concept that Chip's laying out for the master plan, endorses it to some extent and agrees to participate with Chip's organization in seeking out those funds and working with the organization to acquire those funds from the sources that Julie indicated.
That is correct. A development agreement that you referenced earlier, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
The agreement that we in the town would inherit as it relates to this specific funding source.
Correct.
The development agreement is not here, though. That that's that's another document that's really just yours, right?
Well, the development agreement would be, it it's dependent upon the funding that's obtained and the reason for the funding. So it's related much more to actual what that is. And I think what you can think of that, uh, Mr. Manager, is that becomes a roadmap for the dispersment of the funds. Um, particularly if such as a Mass Works grant where the town is a recipient, uh how those funds and the town can track the use of those funds uh onto this property for the benefit of the public as indicated here and can would set forth what Chip has to do in order to be able to access those funds moving forward. So it it's a much more um detailed document, but it's also dependent upon what the funding is obtained for. Uh, as you heard from Julie, there's a lot of different sources out there for different reasons. So it would be premature now to try to anticipate what all of those might be and the requirements of the funding sources.
And Julie, I I don't see this as an ex, you know, looking at this document, it's not an extensive legal document. It doesn't really obligate the town to too much. So I I I thought when we saw, when we originally talked about this, I was expecting to have to have very deep legal review of this. This doesn't look like it has a hell of a lot of impact on the town, this this particular agreement or this particular document.
Well, in terms of like uh pursuing any grant funds, I mean, the the grant application would be under the the name of the town. So the town would be, um, you know, signing these application documents.
All right. That's for later.
If if I might, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I I I think, um, Mr. Manager, you you is accurate that this document doesn't, and it's purposeful in that purpose. It doesn't doesn't impose any affirmative obligations upon the town. Rather, what it creates is a series of affirmative obligations upon the owner of the land as to how they're going to commit for an extended period of time uh to use the land in a fashion that the public has the benefit of. Uh, and so what the town's purpose is, is to acknowledge it uh to be an enforcement party. But it's it's clear that this is not the instrument that creates a lot of obligations on the town in any fashion. That would be the separate development agreement or part of the application that Julie was speaking of.
So so it's fair to say, at least what I'm thinking of it, that this is really a relationship kind of building document where the town is generally agreeing to be supportive of of applying for things like Mass Work grants to make the master plan work, right? So it's it's the beginning of that, building that relationship to look at state grants and things like that, that the town would cooperate with you in to move this whole thing forward. That a pretty good description of what we're talking about?
I think that's well put.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, I'll open up to questions from councils first. Anyone? Council Steve, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, hi, Chip and everyone there. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation first off. Um, I got a couple of questions specifically relating to some of the elements of your of the earlier stages of your presentation. Um, one of them is that um I like the idea of, first of all, I like the idea that you're connecting the trails around around the pond there. Although personally, I kind of like the the name of Lenzdale just because it's got history to it. Um, but that's the property, so I don't, I'm not too concerned about that. Um, but anyway, I was curious about the uh the new K Street one thirty-one intersection that you were talking about is phase three. I mean, I think that's a that's a great idea because I think we've all seen how much of a of a hazard that that intersection is now. Uh, but I was curious about what, how would that affect the the already approved parking access that you guys have for five for five to fifteen K Street?
Um, we we would stay with the plan originally endorsed by the town for serving that building. Uh, you you folks asked us to make some minor modifications. They are at the corner of signage and whatever. That was stay in place and that entrance would stay as as primarily the five fifteen K Street entrance and parking area. It probably would not be connected physically to the new entrance.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's interesting. Um, because I could almost see it going the other way and having people come in from that side and parking in there because it'd be a lot safer, I would think, but.
Well, Bill can answer. I think the elevation that would be challenging that gets coming off of that bridge to get, you know, with the elevation down into the five fifteen area.
Right.
Uh, we we have designed it such where uh we think we can get the bridge to be positioned so you can actually come off the bridge into the parking area for twenty-five K Street. That's basically on the second floor, so you get a sense of the elevation issue there. So I I don't think it's feasible to come into the K Street five to five fifteen area off that bridge. Bill, you want to jump in?
You're exactly right, Chip. It's about a twenty-foot grade change um to get up to that area from five, so correct statement.
Now, so you're basically talking at a gigantic ramp going toward where the existing bridge is?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, also, I was curious about, let's see here. Um, what effect would applying for this project under, you talked about the Mass Works and the federal Um, what effect would applying for this project under, you talked about the Mass Works and the federal, federal, other federal and state possible funding sources. What effect would applying for this project have on the town's ability to seek? Uh, money for roads, Mill Street Bridge, the fires, fire station and other projects that we also meet around town? Anybody have an answer to that?
Yeah.
I, I, I would to you, Mr. Chair.
I could speak to that. This is Mary.
Okay, Rosemary.
Okay, so, um, the Mass Works Grant, um, has two goals in mind. One is economic development and the other is the development of housing. So it really is not, um, projects like the Firehouse, um, would not be eligible for that.
What about the, like the other federal, federal funding, like for someone called CARES Act funding or any of this other stuff? Because I know there's been, we brought it up at the last council meeting about the possibility of CARES Act funding being used for other things besides coronavirus issues.
So the CARES Act funding is a behemoth act, as you probably know, and it has all kinds of. Uh, tendrils to it. So, um. As far as the, so the EDA, which is the other type of funding that Julie had mentioned, which is federal funding. Um, that again is also tied to, um, infrastructure projects that are going to generate economic development, you know, investment in jobs. Um, as far as CARES Act funding for municipalities, um. You know, for their governmentally owned properties, that, that's just a whole nother thing. That, that there wouldn't be a crossover, um, type of, uh, funding for these, you know, for that and this type of project.
Okay, okay. All right, hold on, Gus. Uh, Ron, did you have a follow up to?
Yeah, just, just to kind of go through that with you, wouldn't it have any impact on our normal grant process? Things like Rose Chapter ninety or Chapter seventy. The, the only thing this, from what I'm hearing here would have impact on is economic development type projects because those can be competitive in nature. Um, so you know, if other businesses wanted to apply for that same kind of money, there's a limitation of how much we could get. But I don't think in terms of all the other grants, I don't think it would have any impact on those. But there are certain economic development group like Mass Works, you're only going to get so many. So. You know, we would limit our ability to help some other businesses in town if we were to take those resources and try to dedicate them to this project, but. The other side of that is this project is so valuable that it's probably worth doing that anyway, but, but there is competition in some of those programs, so.
What, to follow up with that question, uh, back to you, Ron. Um, so with the fact that we recently had the Mass Works Grant for the United Lens Project. What are, what do you figure that this, are, are you hearing anything from the state about our chances of getting a Mass Works Grant for this kind of a project?
So, so we have not begun the asset process. So Mass Works Grants, the state looks at those in terms of the type of project involved and what the benefit to the community is. I would suspect a couple of things. I would suspect knowing Chip and having already dealt with him that he has good relationships with our state government. And has some ability to lobby for certain types of grants. So I don't think it would be a problem. Um, you know, the only other company that has even talked to us about a Mass Works potential grant was, um, uh, A and M Tool. But other than that, nobody else has reached out to us for that type of grant at this time. Uh, at least unless Rosemary knows something else, but, but you know, I think. The, the strong benefits of this opening up for public space and economic development opportunities. This is the kind of project that I state, I think the state would look very favorably on. Because this has not only benefits to the town, but for the state as a whole.
Yeah, and I'd just follow that up, um, Gus, that, um, so this is housing. Well, part of this is housing that's going to be generated. Um, and it's also about economic development. So it's, I think it would be seen as a very attractive project by the state. Because it's got both of the elements that they look for, a trigger for economic development and housing. And, uh, the amount of the investment, um, the private investment that's being made makes this, um, would make this Mass Works Application. Um, pretty competitive and the, um, Mass Works, um. Application that we submitted is now, you know, about three years ago. So I, I don't think that would be an issue.
Thank you. Julie, go ahead.
And I must say, I, I have just briefly talked with the, um, EDA representative. Um, for this area about this project specifically. Um, and I kind of gave her some of the, um, the employment figures. The idea of creating such a significant number as you saw in Chip's presentation of going from. You know, you have three hundred and fifty-three people that are currently working in this campus now. With the potential to grow up to seven hundred, that is the type of stuff that, that, that the, uh, the feds, the. The EDA in particular is looking for. They are looking for that job creation. They are looking for that tax base generation. So. I mean, I think this is really right in the EDA wheel, wheelhouse.
Julie, just for the record, you said W B D C, I think. Could you just say, uh, uh, what that is for the, uh, for the record for.
Certainly, certainly. We deal in acronyms a lot, so my apologies for that. It's the Worcester Business Development Corporation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Council Steve.
And my last question is this, um, earlier you mentioned the idea, uh, the fact that it's, it's all sub, it's all owned by basically you, Chip, under three different names. Uh, but I was curious about, and that this project would be for thirty years and a variety of requirements going on over the course of that time. Um, what would if for some reason you were to sell off individual buildings or parts of the property, how would that affect the agreement?
Uh, well, I can jump, reference it, Mark can jump in. First of all, the, the buildings, uh, the three parcels. Um, parcel one is the Hotel Conference Center. Parcel two is the land under all the other buildings and then parcel three is vacant land. So the way we transact in selling buildings is we sell the building, but retain the land through a ground lease. So there's really no way to effectively sell, for instance, parcel two land, so to speak. Um, uh, I can't tell you what, what the thirty year plan is because I'm not going to be around, but, uh. You know, the, I would suspect that. You could end up with one or two, uh, owners of three of the land parcels. That's conceivable. Uh, but when you sell a building, you wouldn't be selling the land. You'd be selling just the building.
And what if they wanted the land?
Well, it, we'd have to go through a process of subdivision with the town, which would convert. The roads to public access and we, we in the town have agreed that that's just not where we want to go with the project long term. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to say, I think this is magnificent. I think it's, um, a, a great opportunity for our community. And, um, these last few days I've been going down in that area with my daughter on bike rides and stuff. And, you know, I just look at it and there's so much potential down there. So I'm really happy to see this presentation. Um, question though, I mean, you talk about like having, um, parks and, and all this stuff. Have you ever thought, um. Or maybe I missed it, but have you discussed like putting in like, um, little information? No pieces about the history of that area, um, just to keep. It alive for our community. That was a huge part of the Wells family and the AO took a, um, they were a huge part in. Like World War Two, um, a lot of research, you know, great research. Have you, and, and landmarks there or when people take their walks through the park or on the trails or something? Um, you know, marking it and, and just giving a little bit of tidbits, information. And, um, have you thought about opening up the, um, tunnels? That go down under there. So.
Well, I'll answer that question. Uh, the tunnels are really utility tunnels at this point. They're really not. Uh, designed for pedestrian access and use. So that's probably not. Um, uh, something we would pursue, but your first idea is a great idea and that. Uh, we should absolutely build that concept into our master plan. We haven't obviously evolved into those level of details, but. Uh, I think as you know, we now, uh, we've been listed, a preliminary listing of the whole park on the National Register. And so it was totally appropriate that we build AO landmarks into this whole master plan. It's a great idea and we absolutely will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, for that question because that was my thought as this presentation was going, going through is. You know, you have walking trails in different communities that you go to, you know, different, different states and. To keep that history alive because it was such a, a big history of the town of Southbridge that, um, incorporating those into the project. Uh, with land that, you know, plaques or whatever or wayfinders that say this was, we sat here was this and. You know, this was developed or something like that would be maybe help to, I, I think if you go to the, um. Uh, I, I know at the, uh, Southbridge Business Partnership, they were talking about having a walking trail at Southbridge. So that would, uh, for the whole town. So that would be nice to incorporate that into the walking trail there as well. Um, as part of an overall development of the whole downtown and town infrastructure for that walk-in program. That would be nice. Council Adams? Uh, Council Adams? Uh, Council Adams, mic's off. He can't talk tonight. So you can use the chat function like Council Steve, but, uh. Uh, so Chip, I, I guess I, I would just have a couple of questions, uh, unless any other councils have a question right now. Um, so, uh, as the town manager has said, the covenant and conditions is really, uh, not something that we will work on. But I'm really, uh. The point of these grants or the Mass Works funding grant application or the town's the partner in this or, or, or whatever. What's the timeline for this grant application and where are we looking at that the? The town would have to have some kind of approval by council to allow that to go through. What, what is that timeline of that?
Well, uh, Julie jumped in. Mass Works, I believe the application process is August, as we know now.
As of right now, it looks like the application, um, due date will be probably the end of August. And as for EDA, um, that is a rolling application process. Um, so we can certainly, you know, work with you all to kind of get the application finalized and submitted. Um. So that, that's kind of working on its own timeline. Um. It would most likely be recapitalized, um, on October first, which is the start of the new federal fiscal year too. So.
Um, okay, so as far as timing goes, uh, oh. I, I guess I know for me to feel comfortable on, on making any decisions would be to see exactly what. I, 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 I remember the, uh. Mass Works Application, but I think that was started before I really became a council. So I haven't really been part of a Mass Works. Application and maybe a couple of other councils as well. So I, I, I don't know if maybe at a, at a, at another, uh. Meeting type that you could bring forward what that application is and really what the. Um, implications to the town of Southbridge may or may not be to be able to make an informed decision on that.
Um, Jack, if I may, it's Rosemary. So, um, I, I, you know, we could talk about that amongst us, you know, at the town. I went through that before. Um, there's a number of questions that Julie has already sent to me that I'm very familiar with. Because I worked on the last application and just asks a lot of questions about. You know, do we have a current master plan? Do we have a current, um, economic development plan? Are, do we have green community designation? Um, you know, all these things, um, and, and I can check off many of them. So, um, a, a lot of that, um, those kinds of things are going to help us.
Okay, all right.
The intention would be for us to, you know, work very closely with Rosemary to, um, to draft this up and ultimately. Um, you know, we would give it to Rosemary for, for review. And I mean, Rosemary, I'm not sure what your. Um, internal process is about circulating, um, grant applications, but certainly something that we could work with.
Yeah, I mean, I, I work on them, um, and, you know, I'll share with our Economic Development Commission what we're doing and certainly get their input. Um, but in terms of. You know, you're probably used to, um, working with the City of Worcester. Um, and ours is a little more streamlined than that. Um, so ultimately, obviously, it's the town council after a subcommittee. Um, reviews it that would ultimately approve, you know, the submission of it.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. So, so you know, a lot of that in terms of applying, if I should remember United Lens one. They want to know how many jobs are going to be created, what the benefit, the economic development benefit is going to be to the. Town or potentially the surrounding towns. So, you know, when they're investing money in infrastructure, which is what we're talking about. They want to see how it benefits the local community and how it benefits the state in terms of any potential expansion or revenue. Uh, and also with, with United Lens, Chip, we. Because I, again, I don't know exactly what infrastructure you're going to be applying for, but it, I, obviously about some engineering work. So I remember we had to provide at least some basic engineering information to the state. As to what was being built infrastructure wise and stuff. So we would probably have to work with your engineering company to, to develop what that is for the grant. I'd say that's high level, I think, for the application process, but enough to be able to explain to them what the, what the project was, you know?
Sure, we'd be responsible for all the, the costs and the process of getting the engineering. And, and plans move to the next level as part of the application process.
And I can tell you that one of the things that really makes it competitive is that it's shovel ready when you apply. So the design's done, um, you know, everybody's just kind of waiting for the funding. It's in a, and it's a reimbursement program. So, um, you know, we would be reimbursing as we get the invoices and sending, um, status reports. So, uh, it is very important that it be ready to, like I said, be shovel ready.
When following through, finishing my comment, when we, uh, did the, uh, United Lens Project, we worked a lot. Ty and Bond was their consulting company, their engineering firm. So we worked a lot and they helped us in applying for the grant and everything. So. Uh, we would, we would coordinate all of that with you guys to make sure we had all the appropriate information. At the same time, do that with council as well.
Correct. Well, I'd just like to respond or add to what Rosemary said. Uh, and I did not say this in the presentation, we picked kind of the scope of work for Phase One. To, uh, what we thought was a, would be a streamlined permit process. So would not require state approvals necessarily, more local approvals. So you'll notice we stayed away from bridge construction and that sort of thing and access to one thirty-one for first phase. It's primarily internal work and amenities. So, uh, we think that, that design or that concept. Would be streamlined enough both from a design standpoint and a permitting standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council Adams, did you make it back on the phone?
We are mute.
Uh, so he's on mute right now. So I don't know. Because I know he has a question. Council Adams? There you go. Yep.
I have no idea. I got all the machines working. Never happened before. All right, so apologize. Um, so quick question on the, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm in agreement with the, the codes being placed on the. The signs or signage around the, uh, campus itself. Uh, the only question I did have was on the Southbridge Pond in between Southbridge Pond, I believe, uh, twenty-five Case and sixty Optical. You got that, you have that drop off area, I believe it is. I may have missed that. Is there an area where you guys are discussing any type of safety measures to be put, put in place over there?
Uh, this is at the, at the dam location in the building.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, we would look at that and make sure that all pedestrian and vehicular conflicts are designed so they're taken out of the equation.
I think he's talking kayaks primarily, right?
Right, water, yes.
Water, water safety.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We had actually talked about creating a, some kind of a barrier below, like an, an underground weir to make sure that there was a do not pass line there. So that's something that we, we need to look at with the engineering group and make. We really have a solution and safe solution for that. So.
Okay, all right. We'll look forward to seeing that down the road. I just want to say, uh, thanks to. Chip and then the rest of the team for the constant, um. Uh, briefs to the town council on all these infrastructure projects that you are bringing about on your campus. And I look forward to work with you guys down the road as well of any other. Projects you may have coming forward. Thank you.
That's all. Thanks. Thank you. And to the council, just as full disclosure, because just a point of clarification, it was actually Councilor Adams as Chair of Plan and Development. Myself as Chair of the Council that met with, uh, Chip and the Town Manager and Rosemary to talk about. Uh, this plan and development, whether it should go to plan and development first or come to the council. And that's, uh, where we talked about. Because it is his, his subcommittee that would talk about planning and development, economic development. So, uh, that's why it came to council, just so that everybody's aware of what that medium was, uh, and why it came up the way it did. So thank you. Um, any other councils have anything? So I, I guess Chip from here, I thank you for the presentation. I think, uh. You know, I, I, I am very. So I, I guess Chip from here, I thank you for the presentation. I think, uh, you know, I, I, I am very, uh, excited about that project because I think what we, and we've talked about at all the meetings is, uh, the whole, uh, if you look at, uh, starting up on Upper, uh, West Main Street, uh, where, uh, Wells Junior High School is and that.
You just froze, Jack.
He's way down, all the way down through the Main Street project that will be starting pretty soon. Uh, the Central Street Park and what that's pretty much finished, um, and get then down to your campus. I, I, I think that whole corridor is quite good boom to Southridge as we look forward to the future and trying to bring economic development to the town. So I'm enthusiastic about the project. I think now the next step would have to be really, uh, so that we can keep this on a timeline, make sure we hit your, whatever targets that we need to, that, um, set up a meeting with, uh, Rosemary, uh, and the Town Manager. So we can talk through the Mass Works Grant so that you get something back to the council, uh, in a timely fashion so that we could, uh, make sure that we're all on the same page, uh, as we move forward. Uh, so that, that's my thought process does.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, just a brief comment. I mean, the, the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants and Conditions is not a very complex document. I'm going to brush it through with our attorney. I don't think this is going to cost a lot to review this, but I do want to discuss it. Make sure I understand, you know, what this would mean to us, but I, I don't see this as a big legal review. It should be sort of a quick thing, but I, I want to at least run it by the attorney to look at it. And then really it, it seems to me what they're really looking for is do, does the town council generally like the concept of this? And enter, just simply that we would entertain applying for things like Mass Works and stuff. From the council's comments, I, I think that that sounds to be like the direction we want to do to move forward and, and working with Chip to make this project a reality. There's no immediate commitment of anything other than us, you know, working alongside him to apply for some of these things. Um, I, Chip, are you looking for any more than that tonight? I, I, I just, I want to make sure I understand where, what we're doing now, because you.
Uh, no, I mean, I think, I think, uh, you hit the nail on the head. Mark explained it to you that that's a, you know, that's an agreement of understanding without the town's signature, but at least it gets, it's a document by which we all can say we're now going to work together, uh, towards, uh, grant opportunities, uh, with the, with the town basically as the supplier for the grants. And we're, we're there to work, joint venture with you, preparing the applications and apply.
I would say this, Mr. Chairman, unless there's an objection that members of town council, be my intention, uh, at least for the next couple of months to work with Chip to just keep pushing this forward. Unless there's an objection by the town council, obviously a Mass Works or grant like that would have to come before you for this final decision anyway. But, but just to prepare for all of that and start working on that path, Rosemary obviously would be a key person working with, with Chip on this. But that would be my intention if there's no objection.
Okay. Um, any councils have any comments for the com? Okay. See none. Okay. Chip, we look forward to working with you on this, uh, project and another $15 million project on top of the other, uh, project that you have and future projects. There's nothing but, uh, enhance the town's base for, you know, property values and, and economic development. So thank you for, for working. We look forward to working with you. Does anybody else have any questions before, uh, Chip leaves? I don't see anybody.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, everybody. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Right. Move on to the next agenda item, which was added on, uh, due to the time sensitivity of it. Uh, Rosemary and Peg Dean had asked for this to come forward, um, to vote to authorize the town to submit a regional application as the lead community to include the towns of Charlton and Sturbridge, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for $250,000 in funds, which includes a 15% for administration under the COVID-19 CDBG slash CV Grant Program for Micro Enterprise Assistance, which is due June 5th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Can I get a motion? Thank you. Second, motion by Councilman, seconded by Counselor Steves, uh, this Town Manager, and then we'll go to Peg.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the board for taking up this issue. I know we've had a, a packed, uh, list of agenda items and, and this is important, obviously. Uh, when we have an opportunity to get $250,000, we want to take advantage of it. So I appreciate, uh, you guys doing this for us. I am going to have, um, Rosemary go through this, but, uh, obviously it's a micro enterprise assistant, basically for allowing businesses to apply for funds and I'll have Rosemary walk you through it, but thank you.
Uh, so thank you very much. Um, Chairman Jovian, I really appreciate you getting this on the, um, agenda so quickly. This has been, um, a hurry up and wait kind of thing with, uh, DHCD. Um, as you know, that's the agency that administers the CDBG grants in Massachusetts for HUD. So HUD is where the grants, uh, begin. So, uh, this is specifically to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's special money outside of the normal funding stream that we receive every year. So, um, it, it is, uh, very, it is for very specific, uh, uses. Um, uh, it is either for micro enterprise and I will go into what that means in detail in a, in a minute. So it's either to, for micro enterprise funds. That doesn't sound good. My voice is vibrating. Is that better? Um, and, or for social services, um, that's the money that's being released to the communities by the state. And then there, there's approximately somewhere between 19 and 20 million dollars. That is, um, being released by HUD to Massachusetts in, in response to this pandemic. So approximately half of it is to go towards, um, micro enterprise, very small businesses or social services to be directly administered by communities. Um, and the other approximate half of that 20 million is going, um, DHCD is going to fund directly, um, agencies that already work, um, in communities on, uh, rental assistance. So, um, what we are applying for is for, uh, micro enterprise funding. Um, the definition, DHCD's definition of that is a business that has five or fewer employees and that includes the owner. Um, that is kind of a, uh, a, a, a gap. You know, a lot of these small businesses, they were not helped out by that payment, um, protection program. That was part of the SBA loan. You may have heard that. It's the real small businesses that, uh, tend to suffer the most during, um, well, we can't even say during emergencies like this because this is so unusual. Um, so that's what this is specifically for. Um, so, uh, the grants, um, are, the applications are competitive. Unlike the applications that we usually apply to DHCD for, um, because we're considered what's called a mini entitlement community. That means that, uh, we're smaller than the large communities that get this money directly from HUD. Um, but we are considered an entitlement community in that because of our, uh, demographics, we, uh, we don't, our, our grant is not looked at competitively. Um, but this room is competitive because this is so unusual that, you know, most every community is suffering and most every business is suffering regardless of, um, the, uh, median household income in the town where these businesses are. Um, however, having said that, Southbridge, I don't know if you saw this, is a hotspot, um, in our, uh, county, in Southern Worcester County, not only for the, uh, in, uh, level of virus infections, but also for, um, the economic development impact. Um, so, uh, some of the guidance that we received on this application was that, uh, uh, regional applications were very much encouraged. Um, and if there was going to be a regional application, that it should probably be led by a micro, um, a mini entitlement community. Because communities like ours are, we have a lot of experience with applying for these grants. Um, the other, uh, one of the other pieces of guidance was that, uh, it was strongly suggested that because a lot of communities haven't, you know, uh, have experience with this specific type of program, you know, working with businesses, because CDBG is, is very much about housing and about, uh, infrastructure. Um, so they strongly suggested that communities applying for this should work with entities that have experience with working with loans, um, because this would be kind of like a forgivable loan. Um, and so that's usually what they call CDCs, Community Development Corporations. And we're only in one CDC's catchment area, and that is the Quabog Valley CDC. And they are located in Ware. Um, and I have worked with them a lot. Um, they're wonderful. They're very experienced. Their executive director is a former long time banker in, in some big banks. So, um, what we're planning to do, as you probably saw in the materials we provided you is, um, after speaking to, to this, uh, person, her name is Sheila Cuddy. Um, she, uh, knows what it's like to work with these very, very small businesses. And it's very unlike working with larger businesses. She said there it's, um, they not, they're not always the best with working with paperwork. Then they're not always the best with record keeping. Um, there are some requirements to this program that say we cannot, um, provide this financial assistance to these very small businesses if they're not up to date on all of their taxes. So that's payroll tax, unemployment, uh, fees. Um, you know, any kind of, um, property taxes or water bills or any type of public fee. If they're not up to date with those, then they would be ineligible. So in her experience, she indicated that it, 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 believe it or not, even in these, e- even in this time, it will be difficult to spend this money. So after, um, Peg and I, um, met with her for, uh, quite some time, we'll talk to her on the phone and we had actually met with her in person about a year ago. She recommended that we apply for, um, $250,000. Um, that is a regional grant. We would expect, I'm sorry, we're calling it a, a, a loan, I guess. Um, but it would, it would be a forgivable loan. Um, so, uh, we would expect since we're including Sturbridge and Charlton and Charlton is a, you know, a pretty rural town, um, and Sturbridge certainly doesn't have the same density that Southbridge has. We would, uh, we're hoping or we're thinking that the, um, maybe, I don't know, two thirds of the funds will probably be spent by Southbridge. Um, and then those two towns may make up, um, the balance of that, but we're not going to know until we start soliciting. So I guess at that point I'd like to just leave it, um, to questions.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Counselor Adams? You're dead. Oh, hold on. Did you call in as well? You might have been caller three. Hold on. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
There you go. You were the feedback. That's why I muted you.
I got it. I've never done this part before, so forgive me. Um, the only question, a couple of questions I, uh, Rosemary or Peg, uh, was to have, understanding that possibly we would have two thirds of this, this, this funding coming to us if, if we were, the towns would receive this money. Are the other two towns in agreement with this? Or an understanding that possibly Southbridge would have two thirds of this, these funds?
So Dave, um, neither of those communities would have had a competitive grant to submit. Sturbridge actually, um, proactively contacted us. Um, they're going to be happy for whatever, um, businesses in their town can be helped. And, you know, I threw out that proportion. You know, I don't know exactly how this is going to work, but we certainly have, we have well over 500 businesses. But, you know, that's such a mix. There's manufacturers, that's, um, uh, you know, businesses that where people work from home and it's just them. But we have more, certainly a lot more businesses than those two communities combined. So that's what I'm thinking it might work out to be, but I don't know exactly. But they are just happy for, you know, however we can help their businesses because they would not have been able to get a grant otherwise.
So understanding that, Rosemary, and I appreciate the honest answer of not really sure, um, how much the breakdown would be. Um, how would you guys decide that, uh, you being administrator of these funds, I'm assuming, or the Town of Southbridge would be the administrator of the funds, um, how would you guys work something like this out?
Uh, well, that's a very good question. And so we haven't done this before. And that's the very reason why we're going to partner with the Quabog Valley Community Development Corporation, um, the CDC that I mentioned, because they have much experience, um, with this. And they have worked with a lot of our businesses in the past. So we're going to want to, we're going to be putting together with their help, what the criteria is going to be. Because obviously we want to use these funds in a way that we think is going to be productive. Um, we don't want to, and, and, and she, Sheila Cuddy is her name, the executive director of the QB CDC. She get, she has a very good sense of, you know, a, a business that's on the edge versus something that, you know, um, is, can last if you just give them a helping hand. Um, so we're, we're really going to re, partially rely on her judgment. Um, and we're going to have to set up some cri, you know, some specific criteria, you know? If you, if you see a company that was on the edge a year ago, then, you know, chances are, uh, uh, you know, something else would have occurred that would have maybe impacted this company that it couldn't have been sustained. Um, so we're going to rely on her expertise and we're going to learn a lot from this.
So last question, Mr. Chairman, just, um, have the other two towns already, um, the selectmen already approved this or, or?
Uh, one, um, you know, they're both, um, they have both have Board of Selectmen. So the Town of Berry, um, uh, the town, um, administrator there, Jeff Golis, um, already met with his, um, went to a, a selectman meeting. And if he hasn't already sent the letter, he will be, um, and they had approved it. And then, um, the town administrator, Jeff Bridges from, um, Sturbridge is meeting with his selectman, I think tomorrow night. I know it's this week. And he said they were all for it when he spoke to them individually. So we expect to get a letter from them this week.
So just lastly, thank you, Rosemary. I just want to thank you and Peg for, uh, for this, uh, for sending this to us and actually, uh, thinking about some of the small businesses here in town, uh, when this, this, these funds opened up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just going to shut off your phone real quick. Okay. Cause it's static. Uh, any other questions? Counselor Steves, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, through you to Rosemary. I was curious, I was getting through the Q M that you sent us. Thank you for that, um, about, and I was curious, will this allow, enable, um, companies to, people who have got the documentation in place to start a company actually maybe get, get off their, get on their feet?
No, this is, is, this is to, what we will be looking at is what was this business's revenue last year at this time? Compared to this year and what it, what have they lost? It's very, very specifically about a response to the pandemic and what they lost as a result.
Right. And the other question I had is it's, your footnote specifically says these, these micro businesses are ones that provide medical, food delivery, cleaning and other services to support home health and quarantine. How, do you have any, have you talked to anybody about how they, they're defining these other services? How, how loosely, um, will, will our businesses be able, how, how broadly will the businesses be able to apply for this? I mean, because that seems pretty specific.
Well, food delivery, you know, all of our pizza shop. Well, food delivery, you know, all of our pizza shops, they do food delivery. Um, yeah, it's pretty broad. It's, it's. Much clearer what the types of businesses that we cannot provide assistance to.
Yeah, I saw that list.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that's how we're gonna look at it, is if they're not listed in the, in the businesses, we shall not. Um, help, then, you know, for the most part, I think we're gonna try to help them. If they're, you know, up to date, there's all these ifs, if they're up to date on all of their. Their, uh, commitments, you know, their taxes, um, and they can file the paperwork and they can show. The loss, you know, if they're good record keepers and they can show the loss of revenue.
Right, okay. And I just, just for the people who might be watching later, I just wanted to point out that the document also states that. That people have to be current on taxes through March first. So as opposed to people who might have needed to take, you know, a delay in getting the taxes paid. Um, for the current, the current coronavirus issue.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, that's, that was important.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further questions? So you have a public hearing this week? Rosemary, you just want to announce that?
Yes. Public hearing. Uh, and I, there's also one other thing that I want to mention, so the, I've got all the paperwork in front of me. I believe it is Wednesday. I'm sorry, I have a lot of paperwork in front of me, and I know I have that. Um, did I, did we?
It's, it's Wednesday, it's June third, Wednesday night at six P M. So, uh, uh, just for the public, what, uh, what, what can they expect, or what would you expect at this public hearing?
We're going to, uh, read through, um, that notice of funding availability. Uh, maybe not word to word, but we're gonna summarize that, let everyone understand, you know. A lot of the really important eligibility factors that we mentioned tonight. Um, and just get the word out, cause that's what's gonna be really, really important is the outreach, you know, these little businesses are hard to. To get to, so, once we get the funding, um, we're gonna probably be asking. You, um, Council Jovan to, you know, make announcements at town council meetings. Um, we're gonna have an abbreviated period of time to get this money spent. Um, and I know this doesn't sound like it's abbreviated, but we're hearing. That we'll have to spend it by the end of this calendar year, um, but you know, we don't even know exactly. When, oh, so first of all, let me tell you that the deadline for the grant application has been moved to June. Uh, twelfth. Um, because there were a lot of complaints from communities, um, and, uh, you know, it takes, it's, it's a big. Bureaucracy, bureaucracy, so it's gonna take a little while to get, you know, they have to make their decision, cause remember it's competitive. It's gonna take a little while for us to get our contract, um, and then, uh. So it is, it's gonna be kind of an abbreviated time to get this money spent, so it's gonna be very, very important to get the word out. Uh, you know, I'm gonna be using social media, um, if you guys could help us with that, um, we very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Council Nash, did you have something? I don't know if I saw your hand, okay. Any further discussion? Alright, seen none, roll call.
Council Adams?
Daddy, yes?
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
And Council Steve's?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, Rosemary. Look forward to, uh, seeing how that develops. Alright, I understand, welcome to it, turn.
So.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Council Adams? Yes, Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve's?
Yes.
Alright, thank you all for being here tonight and have a good day.